Good evening, and welcome to the December 12th, 2023 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters that are germane to city council if the item wished to speak to is not on the agenda. We have a light system which is three minutes. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. After three minutes, red light will appear, and we ask that you take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The city code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council means that matters by law that city council is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, organization, to include campaign information. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, we ask that you please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Dennis of Lebanon Christian Church will provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Vick will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the city council. I want to thank you for your service to our community. I appreciate the opportunity to pray to open tonight's council meeting. I'm honored to serve, and now please join me in prayer. Dear God, our heavenly Father, all praise, glory, and honor is yours, our creator, sustainer, and Lord. In your divine wisdom, you've established the ideal of government for the benefit of its people. Lord, you have blessed us with these your servants who oversee our city, Newport News. They seek to maintain and improve our way of life, and they strive to build a greater sense of community within our city. Lord, tonight, I pray that you will bless Mayor Jones and members of our city council with your wisdom. Guide them to do what is right in your sight. May they lead us by example. May their decisions and actions be guided by compassion for the citizens they serve. May you inspire them with a greater vision for our community. Lord, our mayor and city council members give of their time, their talent, and their very selves to make our community a greater place to live, to raise a family, to earn a living, and for each of us to have the opportunity to give back to our community. So I ask that you pour out your blessings on each of them and their families. Father, this special time of the year is highlighted by goodwill and generosity. May those of us who have been blessed with more share with those who have less during this season and every season of the year. And may all the citizens of Newport News, including myself, realize that each of us must do our part to make our community become all that it can be. May we dedicate ourselves to that very purpose. May we seek to serve one another, and may we treat each and every member of our community with respect and kindness. And now, may the Lord bless you and keep you. May the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. May the Lord turn his face towards you and give you peace. Amen.
Would you please join me in honoring our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I know we have a lot of youth in the audience, but I must say it is glad to see this place packed. I think it speaks to the importance of moving these city council meetings so that everyone in Newport News can be part of these deliberations. And so I know Councilman Woodbury had some comments as well.
Absolutely, because you all are beautiful. I have never seen such a wonderful packed room, and that's what we want. Your participation, your enthusiasm, your support, and you let us know what we need to do. Thank you for coming, and thank you for filling this room up. It's wonderful.
And before we get started with the first part of the session, I do know we have some champions in their room. So there's a lot of names. I'm just gonna read them, and if you could, just come to the front. So I know with the Tri-City families that are here, they just returned from a national championship that was held in Florida. So there was a football tournament, there's been two cheer teams. I hear that the cheerleaders placed third. Is that correct? Third? Cheerleaders placed third, and I know that the football team, ten and under, was fourth in the nation, twelve and under, fifth in the nation, and then six and under, they had their very first ever flag national tournament. Coaches Tawasha, Jamison, Walker, and Cherry for football and for cheer, Tamika, Tawana, and Melinda. Are they here right now? Raise your hand if you're here. Yep, you guys come into the front. We'll just take a photo.
While you're coming back to your seat, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say there are empty seats on the front row, and I'm a front row sitter because I'm so short. And I don't know what you all find wrong with the front row. It's the best row in the whole place. Come on up here and sit.
And then the last group, I know there is a lot of youth. Let me know if I can get these names right. The Hispanic Youth International World Changers and the Hampton World Changers. Is that correct? Where are you in the audience? Awesome. We appreciate you coming. Last night, the vice mayor and myself, we had an opportunity to speak with the mayor's youth commission, and it warms my heart when individuals who are young really get involved in local government. So thank you so much for coming out. We really appreciate it. So now we will get to public hearings. Page four, Item E1 is a request to approve and resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a First Amendment to land lease by and between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless for the use of a portion of real property located at 185 Enterprise Drive for maintenance equipment on transmission pole. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute Amendment 29 to the deed of lease by and between the City of Newport News and Huntington Ingalls Incorporated for a portion of city-owned property located at 4600 Huntington Avenue for parking purposes. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item E3 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of lease by and between the City of Newport News and James River Fishing Pier for 7601 River Road and the James River Fishing Pier. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page 51, Minutes of the Workset of November 28th, 2023. Page 186, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of November 28th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items F1 and F2, all inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page 204, Item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request for city council to receive and open bids for granting a deed of easement over city-owned property located at 1001 Baptist Road in York County, Virginia.
I will now open the bid. Is a double envelope?
Yes. I'll make you work for it.
Mr. Manager, the bid is for Verizon for a price of $776.25.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Page 215, Item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a lease agreement by and between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and the Bithia Family Foundation Incorporated for a facility located at 429 Thorn Cliff Drive. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Sir, could you come to the podium? I wanted to read something for you. So before we proceed with our next agenda item, I would like to recognize Mr. Bithia. A retired NFL football player, longtime Newport News resident, Denby High School graduate, entrepreneur, philanthropist, who has contributed to our community. On behalf of the council, we express heartfelt gratitude to Mr. Bithia for his steadfast commitment to giving back. His impact is evident in the effort that resulted in the establishment of the beautiful Bithia Basketball Court situated just outside the Denby community center. We look forward to continued partnership and Mr. Bithia's unwavering support for the community that holds a special place in his heart. Without further ado, we extend a warm invitation, Mr. Bithia, to share a few words. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for allowing me to come up here and speak. Also, Colin White, I'm calling McDowell, Senator White, excuse me. Members of the board, thank you for just supporting me in my mission just to be the best I can be for Newport News, Virginia. Especially just being able to have the platform.
Mr. Bithia, it's not in my comments here, but one of my favorite speeches or poems, it's called "The Man in the Arena." It talks about someone that strives to do the deeds, and in my mind, sir, you are a doer of deeds, and we appreciate you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 234, Item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an agreement of lease by and between the Economic Development Authority of the City of Newport News, Virginia, and the City of Newport News, Virginia for $75,708 square foot building and real property located at 13785 Warwick Boulevard in support of the North Police Precinct and Newport News Police Training Academy. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 255, Item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is a request to approve a resolution to approve and adopt the Newport News City Council Handbook.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? I have some discussion. I want to say thank you to Mr. Archer. Thank you to the entire staff. I know it was a tight turnaround, but I truly believe that this handbook or this handbook will help guide our actions, will codify some left and right lateral limits, and we appreciate the hard work on this. So with that being said, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Appropriations. Page 302, Appropriations, Item H, Mr. Manager.
We have three appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating funds in the amount of $10,000 from the Commonwealth's Attorney Asset Forfeiture Fund for projects and events initiated by the Victim Services Unit and Community Outreach Coordinator. The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $650,000 awarded by the Health Resources and Services Administration for community program funding, congressionally-directed spending, in other words, an earmark. The third appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $6 million from the fiscal year 2022.
Hello. Um, it's good.
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. I would like to speak on the children that have been killed in Palestine, in Gaza. Aseed, age newborn. Ahmed, age newborn. Mohammed, newborn. Asil, newborn. Mohammed, newborn. Ahmed, newborn. Eliana, newborn. Abdul, newborn. Omar, newborn. Watin, newborn. Malek, newborn. Puta, newborn. Misk, newborn. Omar, newborn. Ibrahim, newborn. Osama, newborn. Ahmed, newborn. Ur, newborn. Gazal, newborn. Shema, newborn. Moaz, newborn. Ta'im, newborn. Ayla, newborn. Amal, newborn. Lahen, newborn. Gazal, newborn. Sham, newborn. Mahmoud, newborn. Adam, newborn. Adam, newborn. Massa, newborn. Khalid, newborn. Mahah, newborn. Andaya, newborn. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Schlosser?
Good evening. Do I have to wait? Oh, my goodness.
Get closer to the mic.
Good evening. I request the mayor and city council members present here today to honor our humanity and every human life by immediately calling for a ceasefire and directing U.S. taxpayer dollars toward a humanitarian, dignified, and peaceful resolution. The ongoing violence and the horrific loss of thousands of innocent Palestinian and Israeli lives is a humanitarian crisis that is impacting Newport News residents who are grieving and fearful for their loved ones. In addition to the pain and suffering our Arab, Muslim, and Jewish communities are enduring in Newport News, we are also facing the ongoing crises of homelessness, gun violence, and lack of access to health and mental health services, affordable childcare, quality education, well-paying jobs, and affordable housing. It is unconscionable that the federal government would consider giving an additional $14.3 billion in military aid to the state of Israel while our own communities lack access to these basic needs. The U.S. must instead use its power and resources to immediately pursue diplomatic efforts to end the violence against the people of Gaza and the West Bank and to free all of the hostages. The mass protests and the numerous actions taking place all over the globe and the U.S. show that Americans and the rest of the world overwhelmingly support an end to the violence in Gaza and Palestine. A recent poll showed that 66% of voters, which include 80% of Democrats, 57% of independents, and 56% of Republicans, support a ceasefire. Our federal representatives must honor our humanity and every human life by immediately calling for a ceasefire and directing U.S. taxpayer dollars toward a humanitarian, dignified, and peaceful resolution as well as to urgent needs in our local communities. Thank you, and please call for a ceasefire now.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Scott? I thought I saw her, but we can come back. Rabia Jaf- sorry, I apologize if I mess up the names. Rabia Jafri?
Rabia Jafri. Yes, Honorable Mayor Jones and respected city council members. My name is Rabia Jafri, and I'm the owner of a business in the City of Newport News and provide mental health services to the residents of this great city. I've been a resident of Peninsula for the last 23 years. I rise today encouraged by city leaders to adopt a resolution demanding a ceasefire in the war in Gaza. We heard from our mayor after the attack on October 7th decrying the violence against Israeli civilians, which we also oppose, but have only heard silence when it comes to the indiscriminate killing of civilians in Gaza, over 60% of them being children, and we heard some of the names. The justification for this type of violence are absurd. I ask the council members present and the mayor, if we had a fugitive holdup in the bathroom of this facility, would it justify our Air Force dropping a bunker-busting bomb on this building and killing us all to potentially take out one criminal? Of course not, but that is what is happening around the clock in Gaza. We ask you to also raise your voices against all acts of violence and discrimination based on race and religion. We condemn in the strongest terms and ask our council to condemn Islamophobia, anti-Arab, anti-Semitic, and all racist and bigoted acts in our city. We are a diverse city with Christians, Jews, Muslims, Hindus, Buddhists, and people of no religion who should all feel safe and protected within the City of Newport News. We should also feel like our elected leaders represent our values and are willing to speak on our behalf. Honorable mayor and members of council, you may feel that these events are a world away, and what could they possibly have to do with us? Well, I must make you aware that in Plainfield, Illinois, a six-year-old Palestinian-American was stabbed to death 26 times by someone with hatred for Muslims in his heart. In Burlington, Vermont, three Arab-American college students were shot simply for wearing the kaffiyah. The chakkar scarf, that is a symbol of Palestine. Every day in our country, mosques are threatened and vandalized, some burned to the ground. If we aren't proactive, similar violence could happen, God forbid, in our city. We must condemn violence against all, not just one group. An innocent child deserves to live regardless of if they were born in Tel Aviv or Gaza or Newport News. In closing, I repeat my request that the City of Newport News adopt a resolution condemning the violence in Israel and Gaza and demanding an immediate ceasefire to the hostilities. I ask that you speak to protect the lives of innocent men, women, especially children who are dying as we speak here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I think Ms. Sharon Scott came back.
Good evening, the Honorable Council Mayor. So good to be here tonight to see you all in Denby at the North District Community Center. And I was so impressed with the crowd. I didn't know what you all had done to deserve this, but I'm glad they're here. So, good to see you here tonight. You all probably know why I'm here, because it's time for the One City Celebrations Holiday Food Drive and Job Fair event this year. I hope my partner's here. I'm partnering with Intouch Ministries, Dr. Maxwell and New Beach Grove, and of course, all of our other partners. And you all always get me out of breath because y'all call my name when I get here. It starts on Thursday with the Job Fair, One City Job Fair with Hampton Roads Workforce Council and Mr. DeBose, who has headed this up for several years. And the Job Fair starts at ten o'clock, and it goes until two P.M. on Thursday. We have approximately sixty to eighty vendors that will be here, and we just think it's just a great thing to do this time of year. In addition to always feeding people, you know I like to teach people how to fish, and I think I said that on my way out in twenty-twenty-two. So you all, please spread the word. And I think we send it to the city today. Hopefully it can be on Newport News now and in NTV or they are doing something. Also, I have to thank some people. New Beach Grove, of course, they are one of our collection sites, Denby Community Center here, Zion Baptist Church, Twentieth Street, Newport News, Orange State Baptist Church in Hampton, and Six Mount Zion. And I also have to thank the Newport News Public Schools. The young people are turning out again this year. They collect their own parachute was in return. We give them bicycles. So we have approximately a hundred and ten bicycles that we will be distributing again this year. Hopefully we have turkeys. So if y'all have extra turkeys at your home, please don't forget to bring them on Distribution Day, which is Monday, the number eighteen. And the distribution starts at one o'clock on Monday and lasts to seven P.M. But we also collect on Saturday. Let me back up a little bit. See, I'm terribly excited. We collect on Saturday here from ten to four. So we hope that you all will do. And the public, you all used to be telling you to clean out your cabinets and bring your food to me. So I'm saying the same thing this year, and the need has not waned surprisingly over the years. This is our twenty-second year, and the need is still the same. Matter of fact, some says getting greater. So we just look forward to the participation from the community. And a special thank you to the City of Newport News and all that you all do, the different parts. I can't even name everybody. I'm going to forget somebody. But a special thank you to Denby Community Center and their support team for all that they do. So I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sharon Sanford Brown?
I want to thank you, City Council, Mayor Jones, for having me. I want to bring awareness to our daughter, Cherie Brown, that's missing. I would like to ask that the city council and the mayor look at criterias for the missing people, that it takes, the turnaround can be twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours, still thirty-plus days. My daughter's been missing fifty-five days today, and the turnaround for getting her, for the missing person, was thirty days plus, and we just got the Amber Alert. So we just asking, could you change the law or look at the law to have the people that's missing come on television more than twenty-four to forty-eight hours, still thirty-plus days, because Cherie is missing. And they waited thirty days before they even put it on the news, and forty, forty-five days before we got an Amber Alert, and I still don't have my daughter. So I'd just like for you to be aware of the turnaround time and the criterias, because Cherie has stage-four breast cancer, and she missed her appointment. So that's why I'm asking, could you look at the turnaround time for us? Thank you, City Council and Mayor Jones.
Thank you, ma'am. Freega Azar?
Honorable Mayor Jones and esteemed council members, I stand before you today, calling in the spirit of activism and social justice that defines Newport News, and request we be on the right side of history. I urge you to consider a formal resolution expressing solidarity with the Palestinian people driven by profound commitment to humanity. Let me explain. The current situation in Palestine demands our attention. Innocent men, women, children, babies are enduring a campaign of ethnic cleansing and collective punishment at the hands of the Israeli state. Under international law, collective punishment is deemed a war crime involving sanctions imposed on individuals or groups in response to a crime committed by one of them. In Gaza, Israel's response to Hamas's attacks has led to collective punishment, denying access to essential resources such as electricity, water, food, and humanitarian aid to Palestinians. No human should be denied these basic rights to survive. An alarming ethnic cleansing campaign is unfolding before our eyes today. A compelling two million Palestinians are being forced to leave Gaza immediately or face the threat of bombing by the Israeli army. The Gaza Strip had already been termed the world's largest open-air prison by human rights groups and faces unbearable living conditions due to an imposed air, land, and sea blockade for the past seventy-five years. We, the citizens of Newport News, are currently funding a collective punishment and ethnic cleansing campaign. Newport News contributes roughly three million dollars in federal tax aid to Israeli military. But you, esteemed mayor and council members, can stop this. Sixty-six percent of voters support a ceasefire, so why are the leaders not echoing the voices of our people? I propose a resolution that calls for, one, an immediate and permanent ceasefire; two, safe passage of humanitarian aid to alleviate the dire conditions faced by Gazans; three, an end to an Israeli apartheid, occupation, and blockade of Palestinian land; four, an immediate halt to all existing and future aid to Israel; five, the release of approximately seven thousand Palestinians abducted since October seventh, and approximately two-hundred-and-twenty Israeli hostages held by Hamas. Over twenty-four thousand Palestinians, seventy percent of those who were women and children, have been slaughtered by Israeli airstrikes. Two million have been displaced, equivalent to all of Newport News residents multiplied by eleven. They've lost their homes. Newport News, with its history of championing social justice, has responsibility to lead national calls for justice. Let us stand at the forefront for the movement for justice. Ceasefire now!
Thank you. Joyce Southern?
My name is Joyce Southern. I'm a nurse, and I'm a resident of Newport News since before you were born. I live in the Denby area. I live in Meadow Creek Drive, which is right in the Richneck area, right off the Jefferson Avenue Speedway that goes through there. I speak on behalf-
Put your microphone up.
I usually talk so loud they tell me to turn it down. Maybe tonight I'm a little nervous. I've lived in Denby. I have watched Denby over all of these years. I'm a big advocate of Denby, but sometimes I feel like I'm maybe in the minority on that. I think Denby, over on Warwick Boulevard, looks absolutely awful. If you drive down from Oyster Point Road on Warwick Boulevard all the way down to the city limits, I would like to tell everybody to do that on the council and look. And if you can see one thing that is aesthetically pleasing in that corridor, I want you to call me at home and take me and show it to me, because I haven't seen it. I ride up and down through there all the time. And I would like Mr. Harris and Mr. Bethany in particular, since they are the ones who are supposed to be representing Denby. And I haven't really seen much representation from you guys. I'm sorry, but I haven't. We haven't had a real good representative since Madeleine McMillan was here. All the money seems to be going, and I don't mean this in any prejudiced way or anything, but it seems like to me that all the COVID funds and the government funds that are coming in are gone down to the East End to help out. That's fine. The East End needs help, and they need to be built up, and it doesn't look better. I've driven down there lately myself and looked. But Denby's still here. And I was in the community center here, it's got to have been at least ten years ago, where they presented these wonderful pictures, these big things that this consulting firm had gone on and fixed for the Denby Corridor. The Denby Corridor was going to be the most beautiful thing you ever want to see. I never saw one thing. And God only knows how much we spent on that study to get that done and then to do nothing. Every time, every once in a while, you hear this, "Well, we're going to do this in Denby at the old Sherwood Shopping Center." Anybody been by Sherwood Shopping lately and seen anything that was going on up there? Absolutely nothing. The only thing that's been done in Denby in those ten years, I think, is to tear down the Kmart. And that's nothing but a big pile of concrete out there. There's nothing pretty about it. There's nothing pleasing about it. I forgot, I forgot-
You'll get thirty more seconds because we interrupted you with the mic. So give it thirty seconds.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I did forget to mention that there is something aesthetically pleasing, and that's the Mennonite church and Mennon wood beside it. So if anybody rides by, you can count those as two pretty things that are up there. I have some other things that I have written, and I'm going to give it to pass out to y'all. And I want to remind Mr. Harris and Mr. Bethany and Mr. Jones that I sent all of you all emails about this, yours when you first went into office, and I never heard a word from any of you. I mean, is that, am I not supposed to send an email? Y'all are not supposed to answer if your constituents send you an email? I don't know. I thought you were. Are you, Mr. Jones?
Just send the email again, and we'll take a look at it.
And we have councilman corners that you can come out in and tend as well.
One hun.
I have councilman corners where you can come on out and share your concerns with me as well. We do that. We're starting back month. We had our last one a couple weeks ago. Next one will be in January, and I'll let you know the date.
Well, let me know, because I'm willing to come and help and do whatever I can do, because Denby is a good place to live. It's a beautiful place. It was much more beautiful for those of us who remember Sherwood Shopping Center like it used to be and Warwick Boulevard like it used to be. It's a beautiful area, and it's a pity that it can't be brought up to speed. And Jefferson Avenue is a lost cause over there, because you've got every car dealer that's ever been known to mankind that's on Jefferson Avenue. If you don't believe it, just ride up any car you want other than a Tesla.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
You can't get a Tesla on Jefferson Avenue. You can get anything else. Thank y'all for listening to me. I appreciate it.
And if you give it to the clerk, they'll get that. And then, ma'am, if you go right there, if you go, Ms. Orthea has her hand up, she'll get your number, and we'll call you tomorrow. There it is. It's the whip of my age, right? Thank you. All right. Diane Garrison?
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. My name Diane Garrison. I live in the Lee's Mill area. And I do want to ditto, Ms. Scott talked mutely about what I was going to talk tonight, but I do want to thank the school systems. I do want you to know, I probably should go to the school board, but we do have eleven schools participating this year, which I think is wonderful. Three of our schools have given over a thousand pounds of food, and we have one school in this area that's given over five hundred pounds. I'd like to speak a little bit to the FACE representatives, the family engagement and community. They have been wonderful this year to work with, so I just want to ditto what Ms. Scott said. And she kind of took my speech, but please come out and participate, and hopefully you'll see some of our counselors there on Monday when we distribute the food. Thank you.
I will be there.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Said Ismail? Apology, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Said Ismail. I live in Yorktown, and then I'm retired from NASA Civil Service, and I'm a resident of this local area for forty-two years. My request is for the city council to pass a resolution to stop the war in Gaza. Palestinians have suffered unbearable pain and loss over the past seventy years for no fault of theirs. It is true that Hamas committed atrocities on October seventh. However, this is miniscule compared to the atrocities being committed by Israel over the past seventy-five days against the civilian population of Gaza. A friend of ours, Dr. Steele Rosenthal, who retired from Hampton University a few years ago, characterized the terrorism by the people of Palestine as retail terrorism compared to the wholesale terrorism of the state of Israel. The people of Gaza have undergone torture and destruction over the past sixteen years. Israel regularly conducts operations called lawn mowing, and they are not mowing the lawn, they are mowing the people. Over six thousand Gazans were killed before October seventh, a vast number of them women and children. Sophisticated weapons supplied by the U.S. have helped a lot on this. Gaza has been a prison and a concentration camp to two-point-two million people in an area the size of Los Angeles Airport. Gaza has been under siege. It is blocked from air, sea, and land. We can realize their plight. Just imagine being stranded on an airport for about half a day without food and water. A majority face lack of jobs, job opportunities, starvation, and even death. On October seventh, they have lost, since October seventh, have lost over seventeen thousand civilians. The destruction of homes and infrastructure is equivalent to that of twenty nuclear bombs. No food, water, sanitation, or medical care. It is affecting their psyche and mental health as well. Children sleep with fear of death and dismemberment. One report said that children, before they sleep, write their names all over their bodies so that identification of their body parts become easy in case of Israeli bombing. This is genocide. Israel is being protected by the U.S. against war crimes. It is now ready to supply additional four-point-three-billion-dollar worth of arms that is over seven thousand dollar per man, woman, and child in Gaza. The question is, where do we stand on human rights, democracy, and freedom for Palestinians? They have done no harm to us. I beg you, members of the city council, to adopt a resolution to stop this massacre and steer the U.S. towards a lasting peace in this region. May God bless you all and protect every Muslim, Jew, and Christian in this affected area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Jafari Jones?
How y'all doing?
Good.
Peace and blessings, everybody. I like to start, I hate to slouch, but I feel like I got to.
Just see if you can go up. You're a little tall. There you go.
Got you. I'm here to address the crisis with missing women in Newport News. The family of Ms. Cherie Brown came up here and spoke, and we would, wouldn't just like to, I represent BLM seven-five-seven, the president of BLM seven-five-seven, and we don't just want to come here and present problems. We also want to present solutions. Ms. Cherie Brown was, went missing on October the seventeenth of this year. She has stage-four breast cancer. She wasn't, she missed her chemotherapy on November the thirteenth, and yet still, with all these underlying circumstances, she wasn't issued an Ashanti alert until Monday of last week, which I believe was the fifth. week, which I believe was the 5th. And we don't like to bring race into the situation, but there was a missing Caucasian woman that just went missing last week and the very next day she was issued an Ashanti alert and that was very alarming, being that Ms. Sheree Brown was missing for a month. And even if you give circumstances, after she missed her chemo appointment, we feel like that should have raised the biggest red flag. We put on searches since 2017. The Ashanti alert was made because Ms. Ashanti Billy went missing in Norfolk, at Norfolk Naval Base, and they couldn't determine whether Norfolk Naval Base, Norfolk Police or Virginia Beach Police should be searching for her. Therefore, she was never searched for, for those three days. And unfortunately, she was found deceased two, two weeks later in Charlotte, North Carolina. There's a show called First 48, first 48 hours of any crime, whether it be the most egregious to the smallest, you have your highest level of completion or finding somebody within the first 48 hours. Being that an entire month went past, plus without her being searched for, we feel like that was problematic. Saying that we're here to offer solutions as well, we, we have reunited families with loved ones through our large social media outlet, through putting boots on the ground and through advocating at City Council and as well as lobbying up in Richmond for different laws be passed. As of right now, there is a COVID alert that's now going to be in the Senate and the House of Delegates to help find missing children this January based off of a petition that we drafted up. And we're hoping that we could possibly amend the Andre Alert, which also stemmed from Newport News, a missing man gone missing who was wheelchair bound. He wasn't in his wheelchair. It took him over 24 hours to search for him and unfortunately, he was found deceased as well. So we could possibly create an amendment for the Andre Alert or create an amendment for the Ashanti Alert, which was specified, anybody with a terminal illness such as cancer or diabetes that missed their treatment could be expedited on the search spectrum. We have a great relationship with Chief Drew as far as putting boots on the ground and exchanging information and hoping that we can bring this forward to see some of the revolutionary things going on here in Newport News. And I'd also like to stand with the people of Palestine with the ceasefire. We were, sorry, I'm saying the ceasefire now, and also the First Amendment protesters were being harassed by the Norfolk, Newport News police. And we are hoping that the same energy they put in the First Amendment protesters, they can put into helping find missing people. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for our call last week. It says ceasefire now, is that?
City Council members, thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak. Tonight, I stand before you as a voice from the heart of Palestine, as a Palestinian who has witnessed the unbearable pain and suffering that our brothers and sisters in Gaza endure. The world may see statistics, numbers and political complexities, but I implore you to look beyond the headlines and into the eyes of the innocent children, the grieving mothers and the broken families. The rhetoric that the media adopts to describe people just like myself is dehumanizing and distasteful. Palestinians don't die. Palestinians are killed. Palestinians are not prisoners, they are hostages held in open air prisons. Palestinians are humans with the same rights to life that you and I have. My people do not deserve to be censored, for the world needs to see the pain and struggles that they are facing as a result of our silence and our tax dollars. As a Palestinian, I cannot find the words to convey the magnitude of the pain that my people endure daily. The images of destruction and suffering are etched into our collective memory and the scars of injustice run deep. But in the face of this adversity, we must not lose sight of our shared humanity. I implore each and every one of you to stand with us, to stand for humanity and to champion the cause of peace. Together, we can be the catalyst for change, the bearers of hope in a world that so desperately needs it. The people of Gaza deserve nothing less than a chance at life, free from the occupation that the Israeli government has imposed on them for decades. Let our collective voice be the force that paves the way for a permanent ceasefire, a chance at life for the men, women and children of Palestine. This is my plea to this City Council, as a citizen of the Hampton Roads, to pass a ceasefire resolution and use your power to show that the lives of your Palestinian constituents and their families matter to you. Every time the media lies, a neighborhood in Gaza dies. Ali Dawabsha, 18 months. Rayyan Abu Hamash, 18 months. Malak Abu Shakoo, 18 months. Samiha Jarad, 18 months. Abdul Hadi, 18 months. Fatim Almasari, 19 months. Qadruplet Khalid, Abdul Khalid, Mahmoud, Mahal Al Baba, two months. Umar Ahmed, two months. Asma Al Bakri, three months. Maria Al Ghazali, four months. Ali Dif, seven months. Ibrahim Al Ransi, seven months. Musa Abu Jarad, eight months. Ramadan Thawabta, eight months. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and Council members. I stand here today to advocate for the safety, dignity, freedom and equality of all people regardless of race and, regardless of race, ethnicity, nationality or religion. And I ask Newport News City Council members to do the same. All human life is precious and I call upon Newport News residents to protect the lives of civilians and stand against indiscriminate and unlawful violence. As of today, approximately 1,200 Israelis and more than 20,000 Palestinians in Gaza, of whom more than our 8,000 are children, have been killed since October 7th. The United Nations' purpose is to maintain international peace and security. The U.N. Secretary General has described the situation in Gaza as a crisis in humanity, finding that ground operation by the Israel Defense Forces and continued bombardment are hitting civilians, hospitals, refugee camps, mosques, churches and U.N. facilities, including shelters that lead, including shelters that leading to the unparalleled unprecedented killing of Palestinian civilians. And many U.N. human rights experts and legal scholars have raised alarm about the genocide in Gaza. Approximately 1.7 million Palestinian in Gaza has been displaced and 2.2 million require urgent humanitarian assistance. Israel is denying Palestinian in Gaza access to vital services such as electricity, clean water, food, medical care and treatment, and millions of dollars in federal tax money collected from Newport News resident helps fund the government responsible for the stripping of these human rights. It is up to us to respectfully support the actions of the U.N. as well as international laws. I ask the Newport News City Council to support the U.S. Congress House Resolution 786 as well as propose and pass a ceasefire resolution within the city, following suit of other cities across the nation. It is our due diligence to stand up for human rights and stand against injustice, not just in the U.S. but in Palestine as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Adam Hajj. I'm from the West Bank. So I was there when my dad was going to jail for inspection expired. I was there when my neighbor got shot because he was farming around his house. I was there when Abu Ali Mustafa in 2000 got killed by a helicopter, a Batshe rocket they shot at him. I was there when a police station palmed. I was there when 20 police officers shot in the head and they killed him with no reason. I was there when they held me captive in a school for 12 hours. I was there when I was a human shield going in front of them, house to house. I was there over 20 years ago, in 2000, in the West Bank. It has nothing to do with Gaza. Gaza, even the worst. But just to tell you what regime these people are, thanks to the internet, thanks to what we see today, so the world can see exactly what they've been suffering for the past 75 years. I have two kids. First one, her name is Serene, she's 16 months. And the other one, Jenna, she's four months. Every time I look at them, I remember Malik. She's, she's two years. Her parents just got her after 10 years of marriage. And guess what? She lost her, her legs. I remember the mother, she's holding her baby, the dead body in her hands. I will never forget the little girl, her name is Iya. She's just calling for the people to help her family. She's 12 years old from under the rubble. I will never forget. Every time I look at my kids, I do remember these two little kids sitting in the, in the street. They have no body after all the family been killed. I do remember the little boy coming out of the rubble and Bonny, his father, has been killed. Today, if you got to ask me what I do condemn, I condemn the military occupation. I do condemn the killing of civilians. I do condemn the killing of children. I do, I do condemn the killing of journalists. I do condemn the media misinformation. I do condemn the bombing of hospitals. I do condemn the bombing of hospitals, of schools. You can't see just the videos, how they're very happy bombing the hospitals, schools, mosques, everything. I do condemn the dehumanization, humanization of Palestinians. I do condemn the U.S. veto. When the U.N. and everybody in the world call for ceasefire, ceasefire now, stop the occupation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't even ready to be called up to the microphone quite yet. It's my first time seeing you guys since y'all took office. Y'all look good up there, doing amazing job. A change had to come. A change still have to come. A lot of work still need to be done. What's sad to me is it wasn't you guys, not most of you guys, that wrote a young life. The people's voice was banned allegedly from the City of Newport News, Virginia. And some of y'all that was on City Council sat by and allowed the people's voice to be settled. Because I stood in the gap for the C.D. Law Department tenants, I was banned. Shame on you, Mr. Archer. We spoke in the hallway, you spoke so well to me, then you turned around and stabbed me in my back, allegedly. I called the city hall today, the secretary that normally answered the phone, she's no longer there. I fell to my knees, I wanted to cry. Because also the city manager that's gone. And those two bastards was really rude to me for years and it got away with it. But all that have done wrote a young life wrong, shut me down for being the voice for the people, God still got work to do. Ready or not, he's coming. He said, "Touch not my notice, security officer in the back and do my profits no harm." I have never did anything bad to anybody. I have never been banned from any city but Newport News, Virginia. I just give the people a listening ear when they going through a storm and when they don't know how to fight, I teach them. Ain't that's what y'all do, help the people? So why was I treated so badly in Newport News, Virginia? I want to tell Chief Drew, congratulations on the good work that he constantly do for his community. He's always there for the people. You can ask anybody from miles away, you can call on Chief Drew and he'll answer the phone for you. And if he's not in his office, he'll return your phone call. Everybody take a lesson out of his textbook. Be more personable to the people. Understand, we all going through a storm. And be thankful to God that you're not the person that's going through the storm, that you're the person that helped the person throughout the storm. I want to tell y'all, y'all are doing amazing job. Even though I feel like I was robbed from the opportunity to speak for the people, I still appreciate all of the wonderful, amazing work that y'all continue to do. The City of Newport News give their citizens more opportunity far as workforce. Y'all having Black History events than any other city in Hampton Roads. You are number one. But watch out, porcelain for Jeep is on y'all butt, just like that. I'm wrote a young life. Bye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Vice Mayor Bethany and Council members. As we enter the holiday season, I want to bring up Newport News, the city of breakthroughs. Let's ensure that we embody the term breakthrough by becoming a voice for the mother that was forced to leave her child behind in an incubator to flee south with the rest of her family. The journalist whose wife and children were killed. The grandpa that combed his granddaughter's hair for the last time. And the author that was killed, along with the power he shared through his poetry. I want to take a moment of silence for the people of Palestine. If we were to dedicate just one second of silence for every person killed in Gaza over the last 66 days, we would be in silence for five hours. That's 10% of our city. Our teachers, doctors, journalists would all be a part of that statistic. Mayor Jones, last council meeting, you had mentioned that you may soon be visiting Ramallah. The U.N. reports that over 700,000 Israeli settlers are currently illegally occupying the West Bank. These settlements are built and funded by the Israeli government. You also mentioned that this was an international issue. I disagree. This is a local issue. Newport News has spent $2,741,121 of federal taxpayer money on funding weapons to Israel and enabling genocide against Palestinians. Your silence, Mayor Jones, does not reflect the urgency, shock, pain and outrage of your constituents. We've seen and heard the silence loud and clear from our politicians and leaders who have repeatedly ignored the pleas of voters. The Constitution starts with "we, the people" and establishes the elected representative democracy that the United States government was built on. But this silence, turning a blind eye to the death of now 24,000 civilians, you call this a democracy? This isn't a democracy. It's a lack of humanity and betraying our core values as a city. If our City Council does not pass a resolution for an immediate ceasefire, blood is on all of our hands. And it becomes clear that you stand with genocide, ethnic cleansing and collective punishment. Do we unequivocally stand against war crimes, crimes against humanity and human rights violations? How many more Palestinian children need to die before this City Council takes action? You all will receive a copy of a ceasefire resolution draft calling for human rights to be returned to the people of Palestine through an immediate and permanent ceasefire. I see humanity in the people that I stand in front of today, so I am certain I will receive a reply from at least one council member who is willing to work with citizens who stand with humanity, to be a city that is on the right side of history by passing a ceasefire resolution and by the power vested in you urging our representatives to support House Resolution 786. The world is watching and our actions today will shape the legacy of our city for future generations. So what will it be? Will we take action or will we wait for the ink and blood to dry in order to speak truth to power? Thank you, and we will free Palestine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Hafia Amin. I'm a Palestinian American and have lived in the Hampton Roads area for the last 23 years. I stand before you today asking you all to support a ceasefire in Palestine. I ask for you to speak for the children of Gaza that cannot speak for themselves. I ask for you to speak for the journalists that are being purposely targeted so that they cannot get their message out to the world. I ask for you to remember that humanitarian aid is being stopped in Gaza. I ask for you to remember that humanitarian aid is being stopped in Gaza purposefully. I ask you to think of the children who had to have the 2003, 2024 school year canceled because there wasn't enough children for the school year. I can't imagine if that would happen today in Newport News or anywhere in the United States. I'm quite sure we would all have something to say about that. I ask you to remember the children that are being pulled from the rubble, from their homes that are being demolished on top of them. I ask for you all to call a ceasefire now. The names of the children that I'm going to read to you, not only didn't reach their first year of life, but barely lived months and some of them only days. Yumna, Raed, Abdajowad, Maria, Ayul, Salama, Saleen, Sham, Fahid, Lina, Diya, Jihad, Rafif, Yusef, Manal, Leyan, Watin, Sinim, Malik, Badir, Sama, Zainah, Ratil, Hala, Sawar, Sabah, Mayan, Rayan, Salem, Zain, Yasmin. Please do the right thing and call for a ceasefire now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Councilwoman. I'm a Palestinian American. I've lived in this area for over 24 years. I have two daughters. I have buried one daughter. I have lived in the West Bank. I have seen the atrocities that have happened there. I have buried an uncle who was killed from a gunshot from a peaceful protest, simply asking for a ceasefire for humanitarian thoughts. There are children dying every day in Gaza and nobody cares about that. There are men and women who are dying. There is no electricity to them. There's no water. There's, there's no humanitarian aid coming to them. I wonder what you would feel like if this was happening here? What would it take for that to happen? What would you do? What would you do if it was your own children that were dying this way? What would you do if it was your own loved ones? I ask that you remember this. When you go home at night, I am going to read to you the names of children who are under a year old that have been killed in this conflict. And I ask that you remember these children and that you asked for a ceasefire in Gaza. Their names are Rayan, Mayan, Salem, Zain, Yasmin, Maria, Aisha, Mohammed, Taya, Baha, Rakan, Muska, Ahmed, Muaz, Kais, Nabil, Alma, Misk, Bilal, Abdul, Tahani, Mohammed, Mustafa, Abdullah, Mohammed, Sarah, Ilad, Ubaidah, Lucy, Iyad, Anisa, Hamza, Salma, and Mohammed. Please remember their names. They never even got a chance to have a moment in this world. Please, free Palestine.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sahin Nanaz. I live in Norfolk and I'm a Navy vet, now full-time student. And I'm requesting that you guys sign for a ceasefire in Palestine. World powers have been utilizing apathy and pre-existing regional conflict as a means to successfully execute colonization and colonialism for centuries. With the aid of technology, it wasn't until the end of World War II that all of mankind was able to collectively witness the true price that paid for this colonization. Six million. Six million Jewish lives, six million martyrs. So what do we do to keep these martyrs from dying in vain? As a result, on January 1st, 1942, representatives of 26 nations at war with the Axis Powers met in Washington to sign the Declaration of the United Nations, what we know today as the UN, to ensure that this never happens again. I grabbed this directly from the United Nations website. Definition of genocide set out Article 2 of the Genocide Convention is, genocide means any of the following acts committed with intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnical, racial, religious group. We are now looking at over 20,000 dead Palestinians in two months. Over 20,000 people of one ethnicity, the indigenous people to the land, were relocated to be massacred using American tax dollars in an oil-rich country. And American people are supposed to believe this isn't for capitalist gain. Are we going to allow 6 million Jewish people to die in vain? Individuals like Isaac Herzog and President Biden no longer control the narrative. The biggest lie that we are told is that we have to lie for them to protect ourselves. We have to tell the truth to protect others. I'm calling that you guys sign a resolution. It costs you nothing. You, this council is supposed to represent the people and we've had over seven people now speak for this. That's all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones.
Just, just, ma'am, just put the mic, there we go.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council. All of y'all, you're looking good. Happy holidays. Y'all have made me ride all the way up here. Y'all left me in downtown Newport, but you thought I wouldn't find you. And I found you. And that had to ride was late, but it got me here. Now, I'm asking you because I need help with this. Cause this is the last time I'm asking y'all for that Verizon Lip and Ride to get me off of that second floor. Uh, I would like Ms. Roder, who has came out there and my behalf and saw me and saw my situation and stuff. So my doctor faxed you a letter today. I know you didn't get it, but I'm going to let Ms. Roder read it to you. You got all my rest of stuff that I sent y'all. Uh, Ms. Roder, could you come up here a minute? She came over there. It's been a nightmare. I mean, but since July 11th, when I moved in there, I have went through the worst thing in my life. And I'm going to ask y'all, young men, cause I know with the ladies, Tina Bick and you young lady, you would not let your mom, your grandma, or your daughter, or anybody go through what Newport News have sent me through and sent us through with that new Lip and Ride building. Y'all know when I came over there to y'all and I beg God and my church, my family for that, for me to get out the back of that church in Newport and get in that new building. I even showed y'all my keys and stuff. And they started out the gate wrong. They got so much wine problem and everything. They waited till they gave me the apartment to let me know I was going on the second floor. And that was a nightmare from then and everything. I had so much stuff going wrong and everything. I had to call everybody. I done been everywhere, cop compliance to everybody. And I'm coming to y'all for this last time because y'all are responsible for everything they building in Newport. And most important, y'all are responsible for us and how we living here. I'm 77 years old and I'm tired of this. Newport News has been horrible to us, forced housing, go, mosque, go to all them different places. Now you allow them to build in here. We have nobody to go to. At least with housing, I had Karen Wise and them young ladies, Teresa Bennett, and they looked out for me and they got me out of the back of there. I don't have nobody to go to, nobody to answer. And the young lady that's in there and those people in there, they reject from housing and stuff. So I'm asking her to read this doctor letter. I went to him Friday. My health has not been the same since I was up there September 3rd by myself knocking on the windows for them five minutes to look up there and fire me. And every month that alarm going off, so I don't know if it's the wine or what. But, uh, Ms. Roder, could you come here one second and read this fifth, not one. The first one was wrote July the 26th. My granddaughter went up there and got it. They ain't pass it to the higher ups. They ain't listen to nothing I said. The second one was in August and two of them were sent. Their letter and mine still ignore me. Come September, when all this happened with the, uh, uh, elevator and everything itself, on September the 3rd, on the 11th, this girl showed me apartment. It had the smell too. They had a few five. It was 104. She asked me and so we got to get you off the second.
Ma'am, ma'am, just, just for, I know we, we had went over. I'll just very quickly, Ms. Roder could read 30 seconds of the letter? That'd be great.
No, I would like for her to read all, Mayor Jones. I've sent you one.
I, I will, I will, I will read it myself, but just, just for 30 seconds and then we'll just move on with the meeting, just, just for time to keep it fair for everyone.
Well, it was fair. They spoke about that and everything. I didn't see no time limit on it. Are we back there in Newport News where I have three minutes?
Everyone, everyone has their three minutes, but it's just.
Well, I ain't got no watch, but I know there was more than three minutes. But let me read this letter.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Look at those two papers right there. And what is that to offer? You know, I done brought the paperwork and everything all to you. Here you go.
And I'll come, I'll come read it tonight, okay?
I know you always like, Mayor Jones, it's not you. We need help down here. We need Bobby Scott. We need all them to come and put some money in Newport, fix it up for us. Don't just give us anything. And y'all just got here. This been going over 50 years while they building up Dem and Riverside and everything. I'm gonna let her read that.
Okay. 20 seconds, Roder.
I got you.
Moved downstairs at 104.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Just, as we, as we wrap up.
As we wrap up, her doctor say during our last assessment, we recommend that Ms. Robinson be relocated to a two-bedroom, first-floor apartment to better accommodate her mobility needs. She was shown a suitable unit at the Lip and Ride on Jefferson, which remains available. But unfortunately, her rental assistant was deemed insignificant and she suffered the consequences and was denied access to that unit.
Okay, got you. Thank you, ma'am. We, we've got it. Um, I think I have Dorothea in the back. She'll take the, the paper and I will read it tonight. I can promise you that.
Okay, and I'm going to Bobby Scott tomorrow, so.
I will, I will give you Bobby's number. You can, you can call.
Oh, I got it already. He came to my church Sunday and stuff, you know? And I'm hoping y'all have a good Christmas and I'm hoping y'all get them people who we don't know who own them and they built down here to move me off of that date on second floor. Ain't no grandma, great-grandma, nobody should have to go through what I've been through.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Lily Robinson. Your HRT bus is outside waiting on you.
They picked me up. They tried to.
So thank you, everyone that, that came. We're actually now going to move on to new business. Mr. Manager.
None, sir.
City Attorney.
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk.
Nothing, sir.
Councilwoman Vic.
I would just like to say, um, thank you for all of the staff and clerk's office and everyone who, um, were able to put this meeting together here in Denby. It, it does feel a lot different, uh, being, than being at City Hall. But, um, and thank you all for coming out. And since this is our only council meeting for December, um, just want to say happy holidays and thank you to the Parks and Recreation and every, everyone who has worked together, our city staff in having a joyous time last Saturday as we, well, two Saturdays ago, as we, um, lit the tree, well, the tree timber. It was such a joyous occasion and so, um, happy holidays. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Woodbury.
Happy holidays to all of you. And I also want to just mention what a joy it's been to hear from you tonight. I don't know how much of it we can control. That's what we have to look at. We, how much control do we have over the situation in the world? And I'm so glad people are still speaking to that. I want to wish you all a happy, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I can still say them. And I really do thank you for coming out and expressing yourselves. That's what we are responding to. We will do it in every way we can in a positive way. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Neely.
I'd like to thank everyone who came out to speak today. Your voices was definitely heard and I'd like to wish everybody a happy holidays and for all the city employees, enjoy your wonderful five days off with your loved ones, family and friends. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Harris.
Oh, and I also want to thank everyone for coming out on tonight here to the community center. I spent a great deal of time here in the community center just off of the youth activities, meetings. And, um, to see this happen on tonight and so many people come out, this was, uh, it felt good to have such engagement. We thank everyone who spoke on tonight and believe me, uh, I definitely heard all of your concerns and we definitely take that into an account. Uh, one thing I, I will say, uh, I, it does dishearten me to see any young person, uh, lose their life and any civilian lose their life. And, uh, that has been something that, uh, we all have witnessed and seen across the internet, social media, and it is, uh, disheartening. On another token, I thank you Mayor Price for recognizing the families.
Mayor Jones.
Mayor Jones, uh, that's the second time I did that. Mayor Jones, uh, thank you once again for recognizing, um, our tri-city family that came out on tonight. And, uh, if you, I know some came a little later on, but this group of young people went down to Florida this past week and participated in the national, it was a football tournament and it was a cheerleading tournament. And it was over, I want to say 80 young people who went down, uh, from ages six up into 12 for football and they represented the North District of Newport News. We had a group of five and six-year-olds that went down who I want to thank Coach Tasha and her staff, uh, cause that was brave to take a group of twenty-some, five and six-year-olds all the way down to Florida and have them in a, in a house together, uh, for three or four days. And they came, that was their first ever U flag football tournament for that age group and they represented Newport News well. We had a nine and 10-year-old group that went down and they came in fourth in the nation, uh, representing our city. And then we also had a 11 and 12-year-old group who came in fifth in the, in the nation, uh, in their age group. And like I said, these are young people from right here in Newport News, a lot of them right here in the North District. And not only did we have a group of football kids go there, we had a cheerleading group, a 10-year-old group, and we had a 14, uh, 13 and 14-year-old group who went down and they came in third in the nation, uh, which is a really big deal with all the teams that compete. They represented Newport News, like I continue to say, because these are our young people and they went down with the, their path, they, the activities that they're passionate about and came in third in the nation. So I want to say congratulations to all of them for their hard work, dedication and energy that they put into the young people here in our community. We're also getting ready for our seventh annual re-up school supply drive, which will take place at the end of January. We will get the dates out to you, but I'm telling you now because we're starting the donation collection phase of the activity. So we're going to be collecting school supply items, pen, pencils, pens, uh, a big thing, a big request is tissue boxes, um, anything that could help a young person that start with, that we give items to to start the school year off, where we always get to the halfway point of the school year and kick-start the second semester off, just as excited and energetic as they did the beginning of the school year. Uh, if you want to make donations, please contact the clerk's office and we'll get your information, uh, to get, to grab those donations. to get, to grab those donations from you, and we'll also have Ms. Hines, if she could raise her hand, if there's anybody here. You can see Ms. Hines, and she's helping with the donations as well. The more we get, the better we can provide to the young people here as they kick off the second semester of the school year, which is the end of January, early February, and that is all I have. And please come out and support Councilwoman Scott as she continues her drive for the holidays. It's always a big, grand event, and we want to make sure we come out and, and get out of help as much as we possibly can, and I'm sorry again, Mayor Jones. I'm saying, Mayor Price. Thank you once again, Mayor Jones. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Long.
I also want to say thank you for everyone who came out this evening. I do appreciate everyone that shares your concerns or whatever is, your passion is in your heart. I would like to wish a happy holiday to all the staff, all the residents of Newport News, and look forward to next year, you coming out again and sharing your, your concerns with us.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
First, I just want to say thank you to everyone for coming out. It has been a long day, and so I know for everyone to stay here, I think it's, it's what, almost nine?
Yeah, hour six.
You know, citizen engagement is extremely important, not only to us, but to our democracy, reminding us, you know, who we represent, and I think to come out and make sure your voice is heard, I think you are fulfilling that civic duty. You know, I'm pretty sure I, I feel good speaking for everyone. We want peace. We want peace, you know, regardless of racial identities, regardless of theological differences, whatever it is, I think peace, period, is always the goal. I know there are certain things that are going on across the world, but I think whatever it is, whether it's domestic, whether it's international, peace for sure, but there was a statement that was made in regards to funds that we allocate, and I think for, you know, I've, I've looked at that budget a lot of times, and so after we, after this meeting, I'll come to you, because I'm curious to know what exactly you're referencing, but I'm, I'm fairly confident we, the funds that we allocate are for the taxpayers of Newport News. So in addition to that, shout out to our young folks that are here, still here. Congratulations again on your major accomplishment. I know the tri-city football team, they have left, but congratulations to all of them, and that's it. That's all I got.
Thank you. I'll, I'll wrap up. My comments are to the youth that we have in the audience in the front and also in the back. I think out and making their voices heard, whether it's international or domestic things, we may not agree on everything, but we can agree that everyone has the right to sort of voice their concerns, and so we hear you, and thank you for coming out. But for the youth, I'm excited about the future of Newport News. When I did the Mayor's Youth Commission last night, when I look at the amount of youth engagement we have, I'm excited to see the civic engagement, and I would ask you to please keep it going in the coming years. We're definitely going to need you, and hopefully one of you will be sitting up here in a few years. Just give me, give me a few years to run reelect, and then I'll come back, okay? With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.